Right there, that's it. That's it, right there, that you got in your hand.
4:30.
4:30?
I couldn't get it out of my head.
I think you'll be here to the end of the meeting. Because I got a question about the dictum. I mean, when I'm done. Oh, oh yeah, because they're going to be possibly back there. The meeting will come to order. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the back meeting room on the east wall, and that is the updated copy now, so you should be aware of that. We'll have roll call.
Harris?
Here.
Knapper? Meyer?
Here.
Raisig?
Here.
Blue?
Here.
Okay, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll mention the things that I normally do. I want to remind all that this meeting is being recorded. It will be broadcast at a later date. So remember whoever wants to speak this evening, we want you to be sure and come forward once you're recognized. And we need you to state your name for the record and spell your name, which assists the county clerk in doing her minutes. Of course, we have no swearing or other inappropriate language. We all need to check our cell phones, try and be sure they're either off or on silent, so that we don't get interrupted. Want to remind the commissioners as well to be sure and speak directly into their microphone loudly, so that not only that everyone here can hear what's being said, but for the recording, to be sure that when it's played back, that everyone can hear what you have to say. Our agenda doesn't look too long tonight. We'll see how that goes. If we get over an hour, and I don't think we're halfway done, then we'll plan to take some kind of an eight-minute break somewhere along the way. I always like to point out that we do have Mr. Jason Ocean here. He is an attorney here representing the county on civil matters, so he is here to assist with the things we do here. Okay. The next item is approval of the agenda and/or consider modifications. Any changes from you, Kelly?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Anyone else have anything?
Well, I move that we accept the agenda.
Okay. We'll have a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none?
Oh, you guys, I'm sorry.
I was just looking for it, thinking.
You aren't going to find it.
It's all right. We'll wait just a minute.
Okay, I have a question. Do... Do I just hit a button for Charlie? If I take him off, I can't add him during this meeting?
That's a good question.
Charlie won't be here. I know for sure.
Okay, so then let's take it off.
Well, then, cancel. I don't know what to do right now.
There just won't be anything recorded on his deal.
You're trying to make it happen electronically, though, huh?
Right. I don't know if I can just...
Voting now?
I'm ready.
All right, so are you ready for us to vote?
Yeah.
All right, we'll go ahead and vote.
And you have four yeses.
All right, motion's carried. Want to also remind everyone, the board reserves the right to enter in a closed session if deemed necessary. We do have some executive session items this evening for the union contract and wage comparison things through the Sheriff's Union, and so there will be an executive session, but this also addresses if anything else comes up during the meeting, that certainly we reserve the right to enter into executive session. The next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is... The intent of that is to take one action for amendments, rebentances, correspondence, and claims, and receive keynote reports. And so that's the items under the consent agenda for this evening.
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have four yeses.
Motion's carried. So the next item is we'll go on to the general agenda items. Board of Equalization, I'm sorry. And so we need to move to go into the Board of Equalization.
I'll make a motion, move into the Board of Equalization.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses.
Motion's carried. So the first item is discuss and consider approval of a homestead exemption of Beale Real Parcel 010136924. Robert?
Good evening. If you recall, our last board meeting, I presented 10 homesteads that were late. We did receive one more in for the deadline, but not in time for publishing of our last meeting, so it's a carryover to this meeting. And so I think you have a copy of the letter that the taxpayer wrote. I'm recommending that the board go ahead and approve this homestead at a total value of $31,610. That would potentially be fully paid by the state.
What is the deadline?
July 20th. They filed, they came in on the afternoon of the 17th, and so it was too late to have it published for our last.
So anything after July 20th is, that's for next year?
This will be our last one.
Okay.
Well, I move that we approve the homestead exemption for the real family.
Second that.
So we're approving the application to go into this thing right?
That's correct.
I have a question.
Change the value or you're not, it isn't approved yet or?
No, I'll have to send the application to the state. The state will review it, and we'll get the determination in October.
Okay. Did you have a question, Kelly?
Do you have the original?
We have one that can be signed, I think. Oh, I can get it to you. I don't have it with me. I thought we had one up here. So that one's standing copy. I don't have it with me.
Okay.
If you want to bring it back up or something, I can sign it.
I'll run down and get it.
Are we ready to vote, I'm sorry?
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses.
All right, motion's carried. Thanks, appreciate that.
While we're in the Board of Equalization, just a quick update, if I can, from Turk. Late today, or today, I received six notice of hearings from Turk. So just as an FYI, we'll have six of the older, oh, four of them are pretty old Turk cases from 2020 and 2021, and two from 2024. I haven't gone through them yet. I'll put a summary together for the board for a later meeting, but those hearings are going to be September 30th, October 7th, 8th, and 9th, so I'll be out of the office those days in North Platte.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
All right, so we need a motion to go out of Board of Equalization.
I move that we go out of Board of Equalization.
Second that. Just a quick question, Robert, where'd he go? Robert? He left, never mind.
He went to get the paper.
It was my understanding that an attorney goes down with him, the county attorney. The county attorney's going to go with him, yeah.
Okay.
Assistant, is that what calling assistant? Yeah, okay, never mind. All right.
Okay, did we vote on that?
Not yet.
Okay, so, and we have a motion to go out? So, right?
What are we voting on?
Leaving Board of Equalization.
Yeah.
We had a motion and a second and a question.
Okay.
We haven't voted.
All right, so now you got your votes.
You have four yeses.
All right, motion's carried. So we'll go out of Board of Equalization. We'll go into general agenda items, which is, the first one is discuss and consider a memorandum of understanding for network access and support with Nebraska State Patrol. Sheriff?
Well, gentlemen, sorry I have to bring this to you. It's kind of another unfunded mandate by the state. This is, so we have access to certain switches and things that the State Patrol is the custodian of for the state. It comes in through NCIC and through the FBI, and then it flows from the Patrol out to all the other places, law enforcement places in the state. So what this is, this has to do with our, the switch at the jail, which has to do almost exclusively with fingerprints. Okay, so we have electronic fingerprints. We take electronic fingerprints at the jail. The other option that you could do is not take electronic fingerprints and do it with ink cards, and that's nothing that we want to do. But not with the, not with the number, sure numbers of people that we have, because the electronic just works a lot better. This is something that the state's been paying for kind of all along, and now they said, oh, well, we're not going to pay for it anymore. We didn't get any warning on this, and they're doing it all across the state. It's, it's not that much money, but it's kind of, you know, another one, another one of those unfunded mandates. The state creates a law, and they create things, and then they just tell us, oh, now you got to pay for it, or we didn't have to pay for it before. And frankly, I know that NACO is working that, because I've been contacted by somebody that works for NACO that's studying those things, and they called me, and I'm on the list of sheriffs that they're calling to ask about some other things that, that the state sex offenders in particular have just kind of dumped on us. And, and so when the state created a sex offender registry, they just said, okay, the first thing, it's the first time you have to sign up, you go to State Patrol Office, and every time after that, you have to go to the Sheriff's Department. So we have to have, we don't have anybody that's committed to that full-time, but it takes our staff some time to do that. And on the last, number, number I knew, we have 188 registered sex offenders living in Scottsburg County. So, so they're coming in pretty frequently. So, so this is just one more thing, so I'll ask you to sign it, and that'll, you know, it'll, that'll go into the, into the budget of the jail, but in the big scheme of things, it's, it's not, it's really not a lot of money.
It's just more of agreement than a cost.
Yeah, 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 it's more of agreement of like, okay, we're, you're using this stuff that's coming to the state, and now you have to help pay. That's what they're doing.
Is the cost this $167.56?
A month.
A month?
A month. That's what it is.
Okay, and you think NACO might be working on that?
NACO, what NACO is working on, not this in particular, what they are working on is unfunded, unfunded state mandates to the counties. And so they asked me, and they asked me about the sex offender registry.
It could be a tax even if we could ever get it pulled off.
Yeah.
And so this would be another one that could be added to their list?
That's just one more thing. But, you know, the, I mean, there, I mean, there's a distinct benefit for us if you figure out what it's costing us actually to fingerprint a person and pay for that, it's not a lot.
Now, is that, let's say, like Banner County, they don't have a jail, do they pay the same, or do they pay a charge as well then for these other counties?
Well, indirectly they do, because if we have, if we hold prisoners for Banner County, we charge Banner County.
So then it does give you some, somehow, some of it.
Yeah, they're paying, they're paying their share.
Okay.
All the other counties are paying their share. Yes, they are.
Yeah, because ultimately, these costs will be put into the cost of prisoners and so...
Right, then, you know, the price per day, we, what we, what we charge for prisoners, yeah, it's included. It's, it's easily covers that.
Okay, and it'll be in your calculations as you figure additional costs in the future, it'll be in there?
You know, there'll be a line item in there for, you know, some of the support services. But, you know, that's, in the, for the jail budget, that's not a significant amount of money, so. So just wanted you to sign it and, and know what's going on here.
So we simply need to have a motion to approve it?
Yes.
Okay.
So I move that we approve the MOU for network access and support with Nebraska State Patrol.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote.
You have four yeses.
All right, motion's carried.
Thank you.
He's not able to vote or anything like that. Okay. Okay, I hope that gets us caught up. So we'll go to the next item, discuss and consider approval of resolutions regarding Heartland Expressway. So I'm the rep, go ahead, Kelly.
I need to know, while I have some time, do you, are you, do you want to take action on these separately? Or as a whole? I only have them on Town Hall as one time.
Okay, so Jason, I guess you were talking about taking a look at these resolutions. Would these need to be voted on separately?
You know, the issue would just be whether there's any disagreement amongst the commissioners on any of these. If so, I would say you would want to separate them out.
Do separate them out?
Well, if there's, if there's any disagreement...
If there's any disagreement, if we all agree to all three, then...
Okay, I'm gonna, you talk away, I'm going to add two other ones. We don't have to use them if I don't need them.
Okay.
Okay? So, go ahead, and I'll get ready for that.
Okay, so...
Hey, Charlie, you hear us?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'll be here to listen if you guys have questions, but I don't mind chiming in, but if I need to, I'm on.
Okay. Okay, so the resolutions, I'm the representative, of course, for Heartland Expressway, and the, the Heartland Expressway group, which is really part of the ports-to-plains corridor that were part of the group, that is part of the ports-to-plains, which is originally talked about being a possible future interstate, and we have been working towards that for, I believe, over 30 years now, that, when this started. And the, they are going to make another effort to approach Congress about some additional funding, is what most of this is about, and there's three specific resolutions here, and they're wanting us to continue our support for the potential of an interstate highway system, part of which is again from Mexico all the way to Canada, and that was the intent way back a long time ago. So this talks about formulas, and some of the actual interstate system has been built, at least in Texas. Some of the stuff has been made into four lanes as we know it from Kimball here, and then headed towards Alliance. And so this is simply stating we're still in favor of the process of creating a ports-to-plains highway as an internet, or interstate system, and that it's still a priority for us, and we would like to see that happen. And that's, they're asking us to recommit that we are in support of it as they go to Congress and try and get some additional funding. And so our Heartland Express group, including Deb Cotier, who is our president, is encouraging us to sign, approve, and, and support, and sign these. She would have been here this evening, but was unable to for some health thing. But she certainly is encouraging us to support it and agreed to sign it, so that it could be our resolutions, along with many others along the route, can be taken to the appropriate congressional delegations. So I'll try and answer any questions. If someone has any questions, I know that this group has been in support of ports-to-plains highway over the years, and I don't think that's changed, but we certainly would be interested in, in knowing that now, if anyone has a concern about it.
I don't know if there's a reason why we wouldn't be.
Kind of what I thought and had kind of expressed to her, but she certainly wanted us to take action upon, on the items and make sure that we had a support from the commissioners.
I would, I would move for signing the resolutions.
All three?
All three of them regarding the Heartland Express.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to support the resolutions for the future interstate feasibility study, including the Heartland Expressway. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses.
All right, so the motion's carried, and get those signed and get them, I think, back to Deb, I think is the appropriate person. Okay, the next item is to discuss and consider date for setting preliminary levy allocations. Kelly?
You, as a board, have to set these by September 1st, but we won't have valuations until, we will say, August 20th, and we will have already had a meeting on the 18th. And so I'm thinking, wondering, can I get you guys together on the 25th, maybe? Just to review the resolution and make your decision?
So the 25th being a Monday?
Any time of day, just, Robert's deadline's the 20th, and I would have time to input the numbers to the resolution for you guys to review it.
So, does anyone have a problem with the 25th? And then we could talk about a time? Do we want to, I'm assuming we would try and make it the only item on the agenda? Yeah, hopefully, yeah. And then... So I guess the question with that...
I could get you guys to come here over your lunch, just so I can get my stuff done.
And then you could get it done that same day? So...
Can anybody tell if they have a conflict at all?
It's good for me.
Okay.
Charlie, can you hear what's going on?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I should probably chime in here. I would really prefer evenings after 4:30 PM or 4:30 PM. This, this, this request is not something of my doing. I've, I've got some people tying me up in courtrooms, and I need to be available, judges are available. And I very much want to be a part of these budget discussions.
And this particular item, if I'm understanding it, Robert, you're going to be presenting the number, your final number of valuation at this, at this meeting? Is that right?
By law, I have to.
Right, and so you're going to have that done, and then we're going to be approving...
And then I... And then I would have time to prepare the-
Paperwork.
Paperwork, the res- I need the, I need his values, so that I have everybody's request that does the preliminaries, so then the valuation multiplied by their request, or divided, depending on how they submit it to me, and then I have the resolution ready for you.
And you plug in that valuation, of course. Not only, and you're talking about valuations, that then they then split up and applied to all the taxing subdivisions-
These are just the preliminary numbers, not all of our political subdivisions.
It's just the one big number for the county that you're talking about.
Little invite?
No, I am not.
So, it would be split up-
Fire District, Cemetery, but Robert sets his value, but then it shows to each political subdivision what portion of Scottsbluff County's value goes towards them.
Okay.
And it also lets them know what their growth is.
Okay, that's what I- okay, and you would have all that calculated by then, and giving us that information?
Right.
Alright. Well, I don't have a problem either way. What you were hoping was that if you got it done by noon, that you could-
I'm fine with 4:30.
Right. And, of course, that valuation, we don't have any, I mean, whatever is presented to us is not gonna be, truly not debatable, it's not, it's gonna be the numbers that are presented.
Unless you see that I've made a glaring error. I would hope you'd say something.
Right, but other than that, I mean, it's, it should be a fairly clear cut, unless, again, as you said, someone sees some kind of a glaring problem, but in most cases, it's gonna be, Robert presents his-
I don't, I don't know that Robert's presenting anything. He, he just has to have the number, and he gets me a copy of all of them.
Okay, and then those you plug into your equations and go from there.
I don't get a copy anymore?
Yeah, she'll get a copy.
Well, you'll get a copy.
Okay.
And then it's not just, is it just the ones that share our levy, or is it all of-
Fire Districts, Sem- Cemeteries, do they share ours?
Yep.
Ag Society?
Right.
No?
No, they aren't.
Okay. I may have a conflict at 4:30. But I don't know yet. Noon would work better for me, but if we have to change it to 4:30, I'll try to be here, but if not, you can do it without me.
And I'm gonna just assume that maybe you just need to have a meeting, because we're gonna have a lot to discuss these next three weeks, so, I mean, this is just one piece of what you normally do. If 25th isn't good, maybe you just-
I was gonna say, is a different date, does a different date work for you? That was just me throwing something out there.
It would if you want to do late afternoons. I just have a conflict that night, so.
Right, so, I mean, like, the 26th is okay with me, too.
So, I'm gonna suggest the 26th at 4:30. Does anyone have a problem with that, at this point? Alright, so, do we, you want a motion to that effect? Kelly?
Jason, do I need one?
How's it on here?
Just-
Discuss and consider, so you can make a motion on it.
So, August 26th at 4:30? And it sounds like it's a good idea.
Alright, so I'm gonna move that we set August 26th at 4:30, or setting the preliminary levy allocation.
And it sounds like other budget discussion is required.
And any other items as required for that 26th meeting?
I'll second that.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, August 26th, 4:30. Any other discussion? Alright, we'll go ahead and vote.
And you have four yeses.
Alright, motion's carried. Alright, so, we'll go to the next item, which is to discuss and consider awarding of a bid for boiler replacement for Scottsbluff County Courthouse. Jay?
You guys, I think I got it to an email, and I think it was probably in your packets, too, on the three bids that we received on the boiler for the courthouse. I think the three bids, as you've seen, were High Plains Boiler and Mechanical from North Platte, Snell Services from here in North Platte. I think it came, actually, bid came out of North Platte, and were asking us a mechanical from Sturgis, South Dakota. So, they are, the Rasmussen came in with the lowest bid is 182,149, and we had talked about a budget number of about 350,000, so it actually came in paramount less than what they had. Kind of surprised in the difference in the spread of all of them.
So, that's what you budgeted, Jay, or that?
We budgeted, well, we discussed around 200, 350,000.
Gotcha.
We didn't really budget anything, because, I mean, we agreed upon it before the budget was due, but anyhow, that's where we're at.
Does this, and I believe the other day when we were talking, this will actually end up coming up out of the capital improvement funds?
It's likely.
Most likely, unless we- Most likely, anyway. Again, we haven't set the budget, but we did talk about this earlier, and said we needed to go ahead and, with the process, even though our budget's not fully set.
Right, yep. I just need to let them know, so they, that's whose bid we accept, so they can get the materials ordered, because we're looking at about five, four to five weeks before they can get it, and we may have weather by then, so.
Have you worked with this agency before?
They will take care of all our boilers and everything at the jail, and they've been, they've been a regular customer of ours, we've been a regular customer of theirs for a while. He was the only one that actually came down and looked at the bid, looked at the project and bid, so the other one bid it from the desk, so.
And the other ones were, we should say, substantially higher?
Yes, I mean, I got the numbers, if you want to hear them, but if you want me to read them out, but Snell's was 292,340, and High Plains Boiler Mechanical was 447,436.
So, this-
Significantly lower, almost over 110,000 dollars less.
Okay. And you, like you said, you worked with them before, and you certainly feel comfortable with them? Or you wouldn't be recommending it?
No, they, yeah, we bought our boilers for hot water heat out at the jail, and we've had some other stuff with them as well.
Okay. Alright, let's see if there's any, any other discussion from anyone in the audience or otherwise?
I would move for the awarding of the bid, 182,000 and whatever it was, 182,049.
I'll second that.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to approve the bid of 182, 182,049 to Rasmussen Mechanical Services.
And they're out of where?
Sturgis.
Sturgis, okay.
Any other discussion?
Okay.
Alright, hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses.
Alright, motion's carried.
Thank you, Jay, for working on that.
Alright, we'll go to the next item, to discuss and consider moving payroll department and functions of payroll from the clerk's office to the management, accountant, HR department. This says the board, but I was gonna go to Mr. Reizik, as he, I think, was kind of the person that started the discussion on this item, so Russ, go ahead.
Well, it started out, I guess, Charlotte was gonna move on, and so I, you know, discussed with Charlotte, and I said, you know, what, what can we do to keep you here and still utilize what you're doing? I said, how much time are you spending doing payroll? And it wasn't really enough time to justify doing that. She needed somewhere, something else to do, and we discussed with Lisa about having her help Lisa with some of the Lisa stuff. And so, you know, kind of talking back and forth, we just kind of, I just kind of decided I could talk to the board, and it's probably a pretty good move.
Okay.
The other, one other item, too, was with, when we met with the auditor the other night, he said we needed another pair of eyes on, on some of the dollars and cents and the money that moves through here, we need to have somebody else look at things. And without, you know, just hiring a whole nother person to do that, if we split the departments, Charlotte can look at it in that department, move it down to the clerk's office, that puts our two sets of eyes on their requirement, and it should help with the audits at the end of the year, we're hoping. Does that meet the requirement, though?
Pardon me?
Does that meet the requirement?
Well, they're asking for more sets of eyes, and-
Well, the only, only reason I ask that is this, it comes up every year.
It does, and every audit I go to-
Every, every-
I go to six audits a year, and everyone has exactly the same-
And I think at one, one of them, I had asked, and may not have been at this meeting, about how you can fix that, and, and his answer was, you hire another accounting person to look at, while we're not gonna do that.
While we're moving her over here.
Yeah, but, but let me finish, and then I said, we already have that, we have people down in Kelly's office that looks the things over, it goes through Lisa, it goes through there, and then it's paid, so we have-
Well, we have one, one person looks at it in her office, now it'll be looked at in her office, not Kelly's, and now that's something to look at, or sign the checks or whatever.
But it-
Okay, you guys.
Go ahead.
What the concern that the auditors bring up, I'm gonna give you an example, sheriff's department has four checking accounts, the same person writes the checks and deposits the money, reconciles. They can handle the day-to-day business, and you get a person in my office to reconcile those accounts. It's those accounts, Veterans Office has a couple of them, and that's the ones I know of right off commissary account over detention center.
So, this would help?
That's the accounts, it's not the ones that we are already working with, we have pretty, a system for accounts payable, that we have a couple sets of eyes going on stuff, but this is, that's what the auditor is referring to, is these smaller accounts.
But the other-
Smaller, but not small.
The other thing is, the same person writing the checks in my office isn't reconciling that account with payroll and with payables. It's a, it's a different person within the office, which Kevin believes is acceptable.
In, in my opinion, the answer is no, you'll still get that line item in your audit, because I don't think it's gonna solve all of those issues that you're talking about.
Possibly, but we can, they can at least say that we are attempting to make it better.
We're moving in that direction.
I think, I think it'll help, I think it'll-
If the, if the departments will work with us on this, if this is the direction we are heading, that's just a small piece of what-
But I think-
This resource could do.
Right, I agree, and, but I, I don't think it'll ever-
You don't think it'll take it off the chart?
I don't think it'll take it off his list of things that he-
We have asked more than once, and we never get a straight answer. I mean, it's not his fault, but it's, and I'm like you, all of the boards and things that we said on, we go through the audits, every one of them had the same thing.
Everyone has that key thing right there, every time.
Every one of them.
Everyone. So, if we can kind of help a little with this, I think it'd be worth giving it a try.
Yet, on the other hand, all of these same boards that we're talking about have two or three people that are, there's, as some of us who sign checks on those, we sign the check, there's somebody that writes the check, there's somebody that reconcile, so there's several sets of eyes that look at everything, goes, and we still get them.
Still get that, yeah.
Maybe sometime, we'll have to pin him down, to go, just exactly, what do we need?
Yeah, I think he needs to write us a definition of how to correct it, not tell us how to correct it, but tell us how to correct it.
Yeah, not that it's a big deal, but it, yeah.
Maybe that's a save for, in case there is fraud that they didn't catch it.
They have to, they have to have something to come up with.
I suppose.
Well, the big thing I see as a positive in this move is the fact that we've had a lot of trouble with implementing Time Clock Plus, and this gives us a person that's dedicated to fixing those issues. Plus, I've worked in the corporate world, I've worked in federal government, and payroll and accounting has always been in the HR department, part of the HR department, I've never seen it separated out, and so, I think this will be a smoother way of doing our accounting and our payroll by having HR and the payroll clerk be in the same office, along with, along with HR, because a lot of times when people go to HR for issues, it could be anything from pay to insurance to healthcare, whatever, it's all at one office, it's a one-stop place for the employees to go.
The, I would only comment that, when this was brought up to me, I, of course, this isn't the first time that this has been discussed sometimes in some of our discussions before. Mr. Meyer reminded me that this was brought up quite some time ago, even before I was on as a commissioner, which would have been seven years ago, or prior to seven years ago. And the, with the thought that payroll, the payroll function certainly fits, as we look in the corporate world, as Mike would say, that it fits more into the accounting part of a business or entity, and along with, we happen to have payroll in that office as well, and so, it, I believe, fits very well with the two, the management accountant part of it, and the HR function that Lisa does, and I think it fits very well with that. I'm not, I mean, it's been part of the clerk's office for a long time, and it has, the payroll gets accomplished, and I appreciate all of that work and the things that have been done there, but I do believe that some economies of scale, and the fact that some of the, that information that needs a transfer between HR and payroll and accounting can be better implemented as being part of one office. And that's why, I guess, I started to get interested in what Russ was suggesting, and then hearing from Mr. Meyer, what he had said about previous talks, and maybe on more than one occasion, then it started to resonate with me, and I felt that it was a good idea to take a look at that. And I believe that, that I could support it, and based upon the information as it's been talked about, I'm, I'm in favor and of it at this point. Ken, do you have any other thoughts?
No, I, for some that maybe don't understand, in a lot of smaller counties where they don't have an accounts management, the clerk does a lot, not only payroll, but they, they do a lot of other things that we have split up in individual departments and individuals to do. Smaller, smaller organizations don't have that privilege to do that. You know, you may have a clerk that is doing five or six different items that, that we wouldn't be doing here, and, and it's, it's been something that's been done for a long time, even, you know, we, we didn't always have an accounts manager either, so, there's it, I think it's just something, I, in my opinion, and, and I'm, I'm not so much in the corporate world, but other- but other, other government organizations where anything that has to do with money comes out of finance office, whatever it is, whether it's payroll, whether it's bill paying, whatever it is, it comes under a finance office. If, if they're capable of having one. Again, smaller villages don't do that. You know, the clerk, the clerk in the smaller, the clerk, the clerk in the smaller village writes, pays for all the bills. But we have that, and I want to call it a luxury, but we have that ability to do that here. And we just haven't taken advantage of it. Well, you've talked about, you know, wanting to do it years back.
Yeah.
What were the thoughts back then on?
Well, the sa- the same thing. If it's, if it has anything to do with paying bills, or anything to do with any money coming in, going out, it needs to be with, with the person that's taking care of the money.
Sure.
Just to put it simply, I guess. And, uh, not that, not that anything was going wrong with the way it was working, it was fine. But I, but I think, again, uh, that's, I don't know if that's, that's the function, and I think it needs to come under there. But I've always, I felt like that for years, decades, actually. So this is nothing new. Just glad to see we're, at least taking some action on.
Well, I'd make a motion in that direction if everybody's done.
I'll second that.
Well, I have to read the motion. Uh, resolution concerning county payroll functions, Scotts Bluff County. Whereas it has been determined that it's the, in the best interest of Scotts Bluff County, Nebraska, to adjust the payroll functions for county employees. Now therefore, the Scotts Bluff County Commissioners resolve that the payroll function for county employees should be transferred from the county's clerk, county clerk's office to the management account, human resources department. That the appropriate payroll clerk shall be transferred from the county clerk's office to the management accountant slash human resources department to carry out these functions. The county clerk shall remain responsible for statutory duties, including counter signing warrants and deliver, delivery of all warrants payable to employees of the county upon completion of the entries so required in the warranty and distribution records of the office in charge of such records.
One thing I might add to that is, we, we don't have a, a date when all of this is going to happen. And I, I, I would like to just interject to do it as quickly as we can.
Okay, sure.
So we're not gonna drag it out. Uh, Jay needs to be involved in it as far as moving, the actual physical moving. Uh, they're gonna be moving to the other office where mapping used to be, it's a bigger office.
Good.
So they need some, John, John needs to do some things as far as ATE, and Jay's gonna hopefully help with getting that all, all.
We have a motion to approve this resolution. And, um, so do we have a second?
Yes, yes you do.
So we have a second, and, um, I think we have some further discussion, and Ms. Lisa, you're gonna come on up, Mr. Wagers.
Mitch Wagers, M I T C H W A G E R S. Uh, I, I appreciate talking about this. I'm, I'm a bit confused as to, are you actually talking about moving the entire functionality, or is it now split? Because there was discussion both ways that I, that I heard.
Can you explain what your question is, one more time?
Well, your, my question is about payroll department and functions, that's the agenda item, right?
They're moving up there.
Moving it from the clerk's office to the account management.
Right, and account management's office is moving as well.
Okay, so is the entire functionality moving, or is it being split? Because I heard discussions about, well, one person can look at it, another person can look at it.
Well, she will do the, she'll write the checks, do the payroll, and then it goes down, and then Kelly distributes checks. That's basically what was said on this resolution. She'll distribute.
That's, that's not what this says.
You got the, uh, resolution there?
The agenda item says, discuss and consider moving payroll department and functions from the clerk's office to the management accountant.
Yeah, the function of writing the payroll, but she has to deliver the payroll. She still delivers it.
So those functions are different?
Her functions are different than her functions. That stays the same, what she does. Her jobs will stay just the same as theirs. The only thing will be the payroll writer will, part will be moved.
And I guess along with this, I do know, I'm sorry Mitch, but I think it. When we balance the banking, what happens is when payroll is done, that, um, that monies for payroll first goes into the same bank account that our accounts payable comes out of. And then it is transferred from there to a different bank where it is only payroll. And so it's still going to kind of intertwine with some of our accounts payable and balancing purposes. So, um, along those lines, that function as far as balancing that, we used to be doing that, are we going to create a separate bank account for payroll only? It was done that way because that way, the more accounts it kind of goes through, the paper trail that there is, the auditors are happier with how that went.
And someone has said up here, and I certainly, um, want to say that some of the intricate details of exactly how it's going to function is going to need to be dealt with between Lisa and Kelly's office. And some of those things exactly as kind of described it, there may be some other, um, uh, what I think would be, um, smaller details, but the payroll process, the payroll function would be, um, primarily, um, I think as kind of just described it, ninety-eight percent of it would be done up here. And there might be the final couple things done as far as, um, I know in, in our office, we transfer the money into the general, our general fund, and then we transfer it into a payroll fund. And then we know that when those, the key is that that money's in there the night that, on, in our case, on the last business day of the month, we know we have the money in there. It's clearly coming out of this account, and it's, and it's all, um, dealt with. And that will have to be absolutely done and coordinated between the offices. And then I, every single minute day, detail, I don't believe has been ironed out. I don't believe exactly where people are gonna be positioned has been ironed out.
That'll be up to them.
It'll be, um, if, if this passes, then it seems to me that those minor, what I'm gonna call more minor details will be ironed out between the two offices. And then, um, can be processed from there. My understanding was, is that payroll gets kind of, the information comes to the payroll department like the twentieth of the month, is that what I've understood?
At the end of the cycle.
The end of the, the payroll cycle, and then it's processed between that date and last business day of the month.
Correct.
So, it has the critical days.
You had mentioned about moving. And don't be confused, I, I was talking about the way it's happening today.
Sure.
As, as opposed to how I, how we think it's going to work once we make the move. The other move is just basically the relocation of Lisa's office to a bigger office to accommodate Charlotte and, and maybe move some other things around as far as privacy and those kind of things with, with personnel that she doesn't have where she is. So we're trying to make things better for, for her office also. But that's not a, that's not a big board decision, that's just a, just a better place for, for her to be.
And I think there's been several things thought about, ideas thrown out, but I don't know that those exact details, I don't anticipate this group making those exact decisions. But it gets ironed out in their offices.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, and I, I appreciate the response. So there's two last things that I have. Uh, one of those would be, I have the opposite experience in the corporate world with Mr. Blue, uh, and maybe others up here. But payroll was entirely separate, other than HR is in charge of making sure people put in their leave slips, and you know, account for vacation and all of those things. But, uh, as far as the actual monies involved, there was a definitive line separating HR and accounting. Uh, and that's therefore a reason to keep people square, if you want to use that word. So I would certainly want that line to exist between what HR does and what accounting does as far as issuing money out of the account. I mean, I'm just in support of that, so.
We have the count, accountant does HR. It's pretty hard to split out when the same person is doing dual duty there.
I was just expressing my opposite experience from Mr. Blue.
Yeah, we're working on it one step at a time.
So, so my.
I agree with Mr. Wagers. Uh, what I meant is, the payroll person was located in the HR department. They had an office.
That's what I understood.
Their actual duties were separate.
Oh, so again, opposite experiences, but it's all good. I mean, I'm just expressing that the more separation you can get there, the better off you are, just for accountability reasons. But, uh, the last thing is, how many hours are going to be shifted from the clerk's office to Lisa's office to accomplish that? And then how did that bandwidth come up to be available?
Uh, that's a good, uh, question, because, um, when, uh, Mr. Meyer and I met with Kelly to discuss this, we discussed the fact that, some of the working hours of, um, Charlotte is, um, more than just payroll. And that, Mr. Meyer said that we may have to adjust, whether it be, um, a person or part-time person or whatever else. If Kelly's gonna be losing a number of hours out of her office from, um, not having personnel there for some of those hours, then we may have to trade some of those hours, or we may end up having to, um, have a part-time person or something like that. And those are part of the details that I'm looking for these folks to iron out.
Gotcha, appreciate it.
But that's a good question.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Come on up.
Nancy Leach, N E N C Y L E A C H. Um, just had some questions also. So are you looking to eventually move all of the financial stuff, all of the payables and everything to, up to Lisa's area?
I've never heard that discussed.
Well, cause that's kind of what Ken was saying, that all the money should come from, you know, up there.
Just a general comment, just a general statement.
Okay.
The way that we're set up, that might be a little tough to do, I don't know.
Payables can't leave my duties.
Yeah.
Right. I don't, I don't see that.
Yeah, and there's a law, there's a law that says that it has to stay in the clerk's office.
Checking, just clarifying. Um, and also, you know, the, the money, the payroll money comes from our office. It comes through us. Everything comes through the treasurer's office.
All the money comes from your office that gets put into the other accounts or whatever.
Moved around, but it, you know, we are the ones that provide the money.
I know that.
It's changing.
Yeah.
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 I always consider, uh,
Nothing's gonna change.
The treasurer's office is the collector of the funds, and the other offices get to disperse a lot of those funds, so.
Yeah, and maybe my comments were too general, I mean, as far as, you know, how, how things are. But there is, there is a law that states there's certain things that the, that the clerk's office has to do, and it does involve money, and it does involve disbursement, so.
And, and fortunately, that part is part of that process of what the auditor talks about, being separated. People that collect the money, um, is different from the people that expend the funds, so I like that.
I do too.
The segregation and beauty that the auditor said, in any audit that you read, in any, any audit.
I know.
That, that statement.
I know. I know, and I don't know that we can ever satisfy them to the point of taking it out.
Just work that direction.
I don't think it ever will be taken out.
I'm gonna ask the next time. I want an explanation.
Be nice to know, really.
I want to know.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, or in the discussion phase, any other discussion? All right, we'll go ahead and vote.
You have four yeses?
All right, so the motion's carried. So I'm, we're anticipating that the two of you will get together. I know that, um, some have expressed they would like to see things happen fairly quickly. And, but I think Lisa, between you and Kelly, you're gonna have to get together, see how that function happens. Okay? The details, yeah.
Well, yeah, we could have been part of the discussion.
Well, the.
A thing.
Yeah, I think, um, those discussions, uh, with you guys and, and Lisa is gonna be important to, to talk about very soon, so. All right, all right, so let's, um, go to the next item. Um, the next item is discuss and consider budget status and meetings scheduled for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget. Lisa?
I gave you a number of reports. I've not given you the book of all the budgets yet. I mean, I could give you my spreadsheet. I think it's not really practical to print them all, but anyway. Anyway. I guess I wanted to start off with, uh, the first, first report. I think I have your county board budget on top, you, you can put that for later. The first thing is to show you, we started off approximately with four million more dollars at this point in time than we have this year. So on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, totaled, we had thirteen million, seven sixty. Now we have nine, nine point five million. The biggest lion's share, the lion's share of that is ARPA funds that we have now spent all our money. We had two point four million dollars in ARPA money. And, and what was the other big one? You know, capital improvements. We took out seven hundred and seventy-six thousand of that. Money's gonna be critical. We don't have lots of money. I mean, it, we might look good now, but talk to Heather, talk to Nancy about February, March. Money might not be there. So that's gonna make budgeting a, um, interesting this year. So that was my fund balance report. Second page, gave you our levy history. Third page, just information for you to kind of look through, let's see, as far as a comparison of where we budgeted last year and where we, where our actual numbers are this year. And then I compared the expenses, I compared the revenue, and I do have copies if anybody else wants to look at this. I forgot to share that. Anyway, for instance, your own budget, we had budgeted two hundred and thirteen thousand, you came in at two hundred and six thousand. So you came in six thousand, seven hundred and twelve. You know, that statement when everyone says, I gave you back money? I mean, they just didn't spend all the money that was potentially allocated. I'm now looking at budget comparative to actual, and also comparing revenues, what we budgeted for revenues in all the different areas. And I, I'm just mainly focusing on the property tax ask stuff right now. This is what I did last year too. We have several other funds that planned, that might be primarily driven by grant funds. You, you all don't have a whole lot of influence on how that money's, just that the fund doesn't get overspent. So we're just looking mainly at the accounts that need property tax dollars. So, anyway, just giving you some comparisons that I thought would be useful to see where, where we were budgeting and where, where we ended, and the highlighted ones were the ones we had to adjust last year. My budget, cooperative extension, county attorney, and surveyor. That's that page. Then my last page is our, where we're, where we sit right now with me, I'm putting all the budgets. Last year, we budgeted like fourteen point one seven, fourteen million dollars is what our tax ask was. And I'm currently sitting at nineteen million. That's not a good place to be. And as far as where we're gonna, you know, Robert's gonna come out with a new number this year. He's told me, well, we can maybe conservatively think we could go up two hundred million dollars over last year, which I think maybe more, but that's where I started. That, that's good, that we can, at least to try to help support our budgets. But we are limited on how far we can, how many more, how much more in taxes we can actually ask for. So, I mean, if the, the, we've been on project, drive down to levy. Now we can only, we can't increase the levy, but like maybe a point or two a year, if we wanted to. In my, in my estimation, yours, I'm gonna say, I'll show you the next page here in a minute. My estimation, we're sitting at a year with no projects, build up your reserves, let's make payroll. That's where I think we stand. It doesn't, it's gonna be tough. Or if we have some projects, we might do some, but not much. Or if we have some projects, we might do some, but not much. We have some capital improvement funds, but we don't want to be depleting that. I have a million dollars sitting in capital improvements. By taking $500,000 last year to support roads projects, it's going away fast. And when we have those months where we are short on cash, it's good to have those other funds ready to draw upon. So, anyway, that's where I wanted to talk to you about. How, how are we going to approach this? We've talked to the appointed officials. I did not pull in all the elected officials at this point because right now, all we're saying is, well, that looks good and makes sense. We want to do everything what everybody's suggesting, right? I mean, everybody has good suggestions, but is it feasible? So.
So you mentioned the ARPA funds, and obviously those ARPA funds won't be there, but we obviously won't have those projects.
Yeah.
Right?
Right. Those projects are gone.
Right. And I can't imagine we would think that we could spend the same amount of money if we don't have ARPA funds to be able to pay for.
Well. You're talking about tax ask, though, aren't you?
I'm talking about tax ask.
Well, you got both, you're right. You're doing both.
You're talking about a grant.
Yeah, but I'm.
You're talking about, I mean, we're talking about, I mean, Steve, here? I'm sorry, he's asking for another $2 million this year. You can only increase your tax ask maybe $800,000 over last year. That's your limit.
Is that based on a $200 million increase? So if it goes 300, 350, 400, it's going to change that number?
No, it's not going to change that.
It's not going to change it?
No, that's my last page to you. Okay. This is the calculation. In years past, we always had to do that. Shall we increase our 1% authority? We don't have that this year. We have a new spreadsheet to look at. And what, what we, and that's this last page. See if I can explain this. What we asked last year, and I have to put that number in, $14,178,000. And the next section, we have nothing to put in there this year because this is a new form. This will be for next year, this information. But now the second section, $14,181,000, is what the auditor of public accounts says we levied. So it's, it's off by $2,000, $3,000. Then we go through this growth percentage information that will come from Robert. I'm using last year's numbers. This number could be a little bit different. I don't think it's going to be a whole lot different, but taking the growth value divided by total valuation last year gives me a .25, which means I can increase my property tax ask based on growth, $35,000. And then this year, I guess because of the, how the state calculated where we stand in the slice index, we can have a 5% growth in, or inflation percentage index this year. So then we can increase like $733,000. The most I can ask for at this point, if my numbers were true, which like I said, a lot of this is dependent on what Robert's going to give me. $14,947,000. That's as high as I can go. Otherwise, to ask for the full $19 million or wherever I'm sitting right now, we're in violation. They, they cap us. They, they say the sky isn't the limit. So this number, I don't think this inflation percentage, $733,000 increase is not going to change. This number, $35,000, well, maybe it'll be $200,000. I don't, I don't know. It might be 2.2, but that's all dependent on the numbers I get from the assessor. So what I'm saying, we, we have 14.9 million is maybe what we'll be able to tax ask. That's still going to be over your pink postcard. Your pink postcard number is going to be more like. 14.4. Where do we start, guys?
What do you have for reserves? Any, any, any money that at the end of the budget year, what did we have theoretically? If everyone paid their taxes, where would we be at?
If everybody paid their tax, we'd be at where we're at now. Two, the money sitting in the bank on that first spreadsheet is our, is what we have sitting in the bank. That's what we have to get us through, right? To me, that's the reserves. We put an extra 2 point, we dropped our reserves from 2.8 million down to 2.4, which was a little dicey. We end our, we start our year at 2.8 million in the general fund.
That's your general on top?
Uh huh.
That's your reserve?
Basically, yeah.
So that's what's left in it right now. I mean, that's what would have been in there January, July 1st.
Yes. So. And that's what the numbers I've given you, I've, I built it. We increased insurance from 950 per FD per month to 1,000 because our self-funded insurance account is currently sitting at 533,000. Last year, we were at 780,000. Some of the money's coming back that we had to front fund, I guess you would say.
So. On your balance total line, if you scroll up just, or scroll down just a little bit.
On this.
Yeah.
Yes.
You got $9,594,000. Is that, how much was actually spent?
Nope. This is just what's sitting in the bank.
Not the 9 million.
9 million is what's sitting in all these different funds. We, we operate on several funds.
And you're.
Capital improvements has a million dollars in it.
You're going to start collecting taxes. When is our next tax?
In August.
Right now.
Right now. So that's going to increase as well?
It'll increase, and then we wait until April.
But to me, again, when we get the money, although it's important, it's not critical when we look at the overall budget. It's important for them to cash flow things.
I'm trying to find.
But it's not critical for the overall budget.
No, I'm just looking to see what we had in, left in reserve line drawn to see how much carryover we had to move into our next year.
Well, yeah, I guess.
And some of the, the numbers you're seeing here are restricted. We can't use that opioid, $167,000 for anything unless it pertains to the specific uses of that money. Anyway, we have budget meetings scheduled Thursday, Friday. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday.
You're talking about the date that you sent out, Lisa?
Yeah.
That's the. I did here. 11th, 12th, and 13th, I think, were the three dates.
And the 7th and the 8th.
7th and 8th.
I didn't write 7th and 8th. That's this week. Okay.
If I remember.
I can explain more of this as we go, but.
What time is it, Lisa?
4:30. Four o'clock, four, I'm sorry.
Four to seven, if I remember right, is what you said.
That's what I said, and it was as needed. We get it all resolved the first day. And that won't happen either. I know it's a lot of numbers to throw at you, but anyway. Started the process, right?
Are you thinking, are you thinking we're going to need all of those days, Lisa, the 12th, the 13th, and then the 18th, 19th, and 20th also?
August 7th and 8th, 11th, 12th, 13th. We didn't go into any other dates yet.
That's a, you had sent us that email and those were the dates that were.
Yeah, I did, I didn't see the 7th and 8th on, so that's. I, I did, I did on the, on the following week, but that's okay. Well, I'll make it work. We'll, we'll get it done. I just didn't have it down for it. That's okay.
So, do you want, do you want me to gather people? That's what I need some help with. Gather people to present or talk through budgets.
I guess, let me ask specifically. We're all in agreement that the 7th and 8th, 11th, 12th, and 13th, four to seven. And have you already advertised for?
I have.
For all five of those, right?
I have.
That's what I thought. And again, if push comes to shove and we didn't need them all, we wouldn't have to do them and stuff like that, but that's the way you have it advertised right now. And that we do have those days available to us. And when, when the original email come out, it said four to seven, but it just starts at four o'clock, I'm assuming is probably what was said.
And the other thing I remind, on the 12th, my training goes till four. So we might be late.
Yeah, we might be.
But we can't be early.
Yeah, that's all right. We can start the meeting a few minutes later or something. Yeah. We'll be okay with that. I see, I see. The, but when we say four to seven, we don't have to stop at seven, right? Or where they advertise four to seven.
You say four to seven, you have to stop at seven.
I think I only put, you put when, how long you wanted them to go, and I only advertised starting at four, I believe.
That's good. That's what I would hope for.
People need to read my email.
I'm, I'm still looking. I don't have anything on the rest of this week, so I don't know why I don't. That's my fault. I'll take the blame. But I'm, but I've got it in there now. We're good to go. And then the 11th, 12th, and 13th, correct? Are the right dates?
Yes. Are you okay? No.
All right.
That screen I want to look at's clear over here on the edge. I can't drag it up.
I will say that I've been involved with three preliminary budgets that we looked at with Lisa. I think Ken and I were both there, and all three of those came out with minimal increases or even deductions. And Mike was telling me that he was involved with three of them that were minimal increases. And so I'm, I'm feeling somewhat good about that, but I'm sure there's going to be some that's not quite that simple.
I put beginning time only in my notice.
Okay, good.
That's good.
We do it like a regular meeting. We start our meetings here at four.
Right.
Sometimes it, sometimes around six, sometimes around nine.
Right. That's good, yeah. Yeah, we don't want to put an ending time on any of those meetings. That's good. It's just.
Depends on who you are.
Well, and it's just a, it's a guide of where we want to be, and we don't want to go till nine o'clock, I think, is what we're saying.
Make good decisions after two hours, right then?
Yeah. Later against the, yeah.
That's for sure.
Okay, so what's happening here?
Well, I think we've agreed that with what you've advertised, that we're in, in favor of that. Beyond that, are you, on this particular line item, Lisa, are you wanting to discuss anything further or we're prim?
I need some ideas because like you just mentioned, we have some that met the, met the 2%, others that went down, others that went way up. What, what is your proposal to move forward?
Lisa's question is, what do you want her to tell all of the rest of us? I believe.
Yeah.
Lisa, you made the comment earlier where you said, "This may be a year we do no projects, we just make payroll." We, we, we've had years like that, and it's even gone farther than that. There's been no projects, we made payroll, and we had to, we had to lay some folks off. I, I don't want to do that at all. And, and that would be a good, in my opinion, be a good place to start as no, no new projects, make the payroll and see what it looks like, and then, and then work up from that. I, I don't, I.
What did Kevin Sylvester tell us? Four months of expenses?
Yeah.
What do you think expenses? Payroll is like a million dollars in them.
No, payroll is a million and a half.
Million and a half, and.
I mean, for a long time, payables was a million and a half. Last, last preapproval, I believe, was around 700 and some thousand, but that's one run out of two in a month.
I guess we can just get our totals together and divide by 12. We set aside 2.4 million, and that won't get us through a month.
Well, what you had put on that last page that.
Opportunities.
14.9, 14 million, 14.9 million, and anything over that is going to put us in violation. Well, when you say violation, what does that mean? It means we can't do it. All right, we can't do it. So, I mean, to me, we need to be basing.
I don't do that in violation, that's on the auditor's work papers.
Okay. But I believe it means that the state doesn't allow us to do it, I think.
Yeah, they, they've limited us, how much we can increase on levy.
Can't we take last year's budgets and see what this increase is? If it's, there's a 4% here, but that's all we can increase. I mean, that's a percent after. I think they can do that in that. We've got a, we've got a dollar amount of, we know what we spent last year, what we spent, and we know all we can spend this year. Pretty simple for everybody to meet that line.
Well, I don't know about simple, but it's simple to know what the line is.
It's simpler last year because we never knew, we never had a line before. Now we have a line. We, I mean, we're there and that's all we can do.
The.
And, yeah, and the sur estimate.
Right. And, but what you said was, doesn't matter what the valuation is, because these percentages are not fully based on valuation.
The inflation percentage is, that's what it's going to be. We're, I think we're fortunate to get a inflation percentage at 5.17. Not set by me, this came down from the state.
It is not based on valuation anyway.
Yeah, that .25 is, but that's a minimal amount compared to the 5%. That's a, I mean, it may, maybe adjust it some, but it's going to be minimal.
That's how I see it, unless Robert has more info on what growth value might look like or. Yeah. Got the right total valuation in there, but I put in last year's what he wrote as the growth value. That was what, what his work paper said. So I don't know. I don't know what it's going to be. I can't imagine it's a lot different. I don't know what goes into that calculation. Do you have any idea? I'm throwing you under the bus.
Yeah, no. You can.
So we might be right there. And.
But Russ, you're right in the fact that it's, sometimes we make it more complicated than, than what it is. You have, you have so much money coming in and you need to spend this much. We can only, now we have a line that says where we're going to end. The only one we have control of is the spending.
Yes.
The money, the money coming in, that's there.
Everybody should ratchet back in their own office. Let them make whatever has to happen. If there's somebody that, if they've got too many people in that office, we're going to have to make a cut. Shouldn't have to do it here. We should be able to do it with some people, show the dollars, the dollar amount they need to cut to.
Yeah, well, what I don't want to do is to cut back projects and then cut back people to do what projects are left.
That's what's hard, that's what's hard.
That's, that's the tough part.
I don't, I'm not, I'm not in favor of that. But, yeah, but we still have some increase here. We're still moving forward, not going backwards. Still moving up some.
Right. And last year, we also used a chunk of that capital improvement, and we had used some Keno money.
That, that, that don't have anything to do with taxation, so we just take that right out of here. I mean, it doesn't help us to talk about it. We're not getting that back, it's gone. We decided to use it.
Inheritance, yeah. Our inheritance, we had a nice amount come in from inheritance tax.
I have seen that.
Yeah, like 1.5 million. So that was helpful.
The other, the other third part to all of that is that you, you can't continue working with zero increase stuff because there's things that need to happen. Prices go up, whether it be fuel or whether it be parts, whether it be, whatever it is, that's going to go up, and you better keep up with that.
Some, some things are actually going down right now.
And, and, and that's, and that's going to help. In fact, they chip sealed all of Liberty Oil to the county line from Abbey twenty-six, then they chip sealed East Charles from Liberty Oil into the Northern City Limits. They chip sealed all that today in one day. And the guy that, our oil supplier was telling me that the oil's actually gone down because the fuel prices back up some, so, actually, our oil's getting somewhat, I don't know if it's a big deal or not, but it makes a lot of difference when you're buying, you know, three semi-loads of oil. And, and like I say, it, it's, it's great that we could say, well, we've cut this much, or we've done this much. We still have a county to operate. We, we still have bills to pay, we, we still have projects. They did a lot of things through their last year in the county that were funded through the, through the regular fund and not, they weren't, ARPA, I mean, the ARPA thing basically went through the bridge over. That was, that was all dedicated money, and we knew what it was going. Yeah, that, that was, that was earmarked. We earmarked it from Scotts and Gary. That's gone, we're never going to get a chance to do that again. So, I know we did a lot of jobs with road and bridges this year, and there should be enough money in there. If they stay flat, or a small increase, they can still do the job. We can't say we're not going to do any projects, because we're definitely going to do some.
Possibly, but, but we just have to watch, because we don't have the capital improvement money.
We got to watch, I realize, but, you know. Still have, still, you know, we still got to meet safety needs, we still got a lot of bridges, a lot of things that need repaired and, and-
And look for, and look for other sources of money.
Our job as commissioners, figure out how to make this thing work, not sit here and complain we don't have enough money. We got to figure out how to make it work.
Money we have.
It's the money we have.
And what I see here is that the maximum at this point, and I think it's close to the numbers you have, fourteen million, nine hundred and forty-seven, uh, thousand is going to be a number that's going to be pretty close.
Right.
As to where we're going to be, and we've, we've got to at least start with that idea.
And they'll still take you to the pink postcard.
Yeah, I know, and I'm not sure I like that, and I'm not sure, but even, even if we start to use that number, it's substantially less than the nineteen million that, that we started with somehow.
That's why we need to give these people a line. If we've increased five percent, five and a quarter, is that where we're at? We came up.
Basically.
So, we need to tell them, take your budget, increase it five and a quarter. It might be four and three quarters to make that come out, because when you increase that, it changes your number.
And I, my number originally that I said was two and a half percent.
Right.
Um, two and a half to three percent, and, but anyway, um, our target certainly has to be no more than fourteen nine forty-seven, because, um-
That's what it is. I do want to explain something else, just so you know, because you'll be, go and look at my paper and say, what about this? There's opportunities for exceptions, where you can add money to increase your authority. You see the lines, county attorney, county public defender, public safety, bonds. But we were warned, use that very, what's-
How about just cautiously?
Cautiously, because you put that in here, you put, you use that, if I put a million dollars in to cover our bonds, we get more, we get more spending capability, but next year, we then have to take it away.
You got to pay that, and you got to make a payment.
You got, then, then, well, yeah, then you lose it next year. You're going to lose that much money.
It turns into a debit, and we're-
Or it's going to go down, it's going to take it away from you. So it's only in, um, circumstances that beyond your control.
We haven't bonded anything.
That top line-
Well, we have bonds that we have.
Of fourteen million, one seventy-eight. Did that include the bonds in that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's in there.
It's in there, but I mean, I'm just saying that there's these lines where we could get exceptions, we could get more money, if we needed.
But if it was in there before-
Yeah.
Then it makes no sense to, to do what you're saying and, and get ourselves in trouble for next year.
What she's saying, we could increase bonding. I don't want to increase bonding. We haven't bought paid bond in four years.
That's not what I mean. No, 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 no. I just was, I mean, I could put, okay, look, there's a line called county attorney. I could put his whole budget in there and do the same thing, saying, we need more money, we can't operate on fourteen nine.
So that would give us over fifteen million.
Yes, but next year then we have to take that amount back, and it works through a formula that we would lose funding next, we would lose tax ass next year. So they were telling me very cautiously use that, that, those exceptions. And only in situations that are, that you can't, I mean, that you, that you can't control. If you would have a natural disaster or something, you could get some additional funds.
But we know, like right now, you've got a fourteen point, or five, excuse me, five point seven percent increase inflation percentage. We know we can get that next year. It's going to be the same thing next year. We can hedge on that if we apply that to those line items you got there, put the five and a half percent there, we will get that next year.
How do you know?
Yeah.
How do you know? That is-
I'm not sure that that's a written stone.
It's not a sentence, don't do it.
Oh, no, it's all based on the SLICE index, which is set by an agency in St. Louis.
Yeah, the, yeah, the inflation rate. What they consider the inflation rate to be, and it's a, they use a different formula than what we would use, but, um, but yeah, that's an inflation rate formula, and it's not, that's not guaranteed.
Okay, but let's just say we took it and we put it in the bond section. Let's, let's say we got six million dollar bond, we take five, that's thirty thousand dollars we could increase our spending. That money could all go right directly to the bond, and we wouldn't, we're not purchasing anything else, we're not committing to anything except paying down the bond, which frees up some more money next year.
I don't know if we can pay down our bonds early.
Yeah, what you, what you said it would be useful was paying down debt on these bonds.
No.
I don't think I said-
What you said, I said, I thought it was for a new bond. I thought you said it was for-
I know you thought it was for new bonds, we didn't. I just threw a number in, approved bonds that we already have.
So we're going both directions with the same thing here, so which is it? Is it to pay down the old bond, or is it for, uh?
Neither.
Something called exception.
The recommendation is don't do anything.
I, I realize, I'm just saying, what if, I'm doing a what if, do a what if.
Our bond payment is like one million dollars a year right now, so, I mean-
For all the bonds. Okay?
Yeah.
So if we took five percent of that and put it there, it isn't going to, we can take that five percent and apply that to the bonds, which we'd pay it, pay it for.
Well, all it's doing is giving you more taxing authority, but then you have to report it next year, as we took an exception last year, and this, this year, we're going to be dinged for that. Is it worth it?
And all this is new formulas that wasn't in effect last year.
Right.
That's why-
All this in our budget meetings. Whole new systems, we're going to, we've got to take a look at.
But in, in the simplest of terms to me, it means, um, whatever we're talking about for tax asking should not be any more than fourteen nine, in my opinion, right now. And that it could fluctuate a little bit from there, but it, that's where we ought to be starting.
Okay. You can see that would probably raise our levy to point three six, I don't know.
If we exceed it, have to get a pink card, I don't know if it's even, so you're looking at-
Well, what she's saying, we can't exceed that. She's saying when we get up to, um, fourteen four, it's going to be the pink postcard. But then we can't go more than fourteen nine based upon the current figures.
Right.
And it may change slightly. But fourteen point four million is going to get a pink postcard, is what she said. All right, well, I think it'll let us continue to process this information for, um, for our first meeting on the seventh, I think. Everyone can talk about it more than-
Again, do you want me to invite everybody? We just going to discuss-
Well, I don't know about any, everybody, but whoever you think is the right amount of people for that day. Oh, you mean everybody? Are we going to want to talk to everybody in the five days or whatever? That's your question.
Yeah.
I think the people that have had a minimal increase or no increase, I don't know that we need to.
Unless you want to compare them to prior years.
Just send them an attaboy.
Well, I don't-
Well, it may, it may end up that if there's a minimal increase or no increase, there may have to be even more till we're done. I mean, just because that's what they're turning in, that doesn't necessarily mean that's what we're going to accept. It may be less than that in order to get to where we need to be.
In my opinion, it's all tentative approval till the end.
Yeah.
Because at the end is when, um, fluctuations may occur. But everything, in my opinion, that we do in those first few days is tentative.
For sure.
I think maybe in answer to your question, Mark, you put it out that we're going to be discussing budget, anybody that would like to be here to defend what the, not that we're going to be discussing anybody's budget in particular, but to defend whatever it is that they've done, and to hear what our, kind of what our plan is and how we're going to move forward with things. If they, if they have the opportunity to come, fine, if not, then-
Yeah, we can start that Thursday, and then we can start calling back more Friday. How's that?
Because that, that's going to affect everybody's budget.
We could start with that, I guess. You know, in my personal, I know that there's been several different ways of doing it. In some of the years, we've looked at every single budget. I don't have a problem with looking at every single budget. I think it's part of what we do. Um, yeah, but I know that some have said that some of the budgets, um, are not, well, they're of the size and of the tax asking, that's not quite as critical, but even some of the budgets that don't have hardly any tax asking, um, at the very least, we ought to be discussing them somewhat along the way, but they may be, those discussions may be five, ten minutes possibly. Some of the budgets that are minimal entries and, and minimal tax asking.
You can see five years' worth, right? Five years' worth?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Just making sure.
Yeah, and you, I can send out my spreadsheets if anybody looks at them. I, I'm serious, I mean-
Do you want to, do you want a motion on those days, or are we just going to go with it?
They're already advertised, I think, so we don't have, I don't-
All right. Now, I will put out an email tomorrow and say what the plan is that we are discussing, here's where we're at, we're going to be making some critical changes, you might want to be involved in the process. We might be calling people Monday to, between Friday and next Wednesday.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then, are you, so that takes care of that line item. Did you also want to talk specifically about the commissioner budget?
We can do that today, or you can look it over and see what, I mean, it's, yours is, doesn't change much. I think you're probably, your biggest change is the fact that I took more help for health insurance, as I did, we asked for everybody, of that number.
And our, even though, yeah, that's like sixty thousand line item, if I remember right, and, um, but what we actually, I mean, you take that money and you put it in the pot.
In the self-funded insurance.
But we actually don't spend that.
Not for yourselves.
Right.
Necessarily, unless you're on the plan.
No.
Unless you are on the health plan.
No, but I mean, as a group, as the five of us, we don't spend near that full amount, um, as the five of us, because I'm, I don't even know, I, I know at one time Charlie was part of the insurance, but I'm betting the rest of us are old enough that-
Yeah, we don't even, we don't get the insurance.
Some are on dental, and, yeah, I mean, you do still have a commissioner on the health plan, so it could be sixty, it could be twenty, it could be eighty, you know?
But the, the sixty, you're, you're going to take the sixty thousand for health insurance either way, and it's going to go in the pot.
Correct.
Right, and that's all right, that's what you do with everybody else.
With our number per full-time employee eligible?
One thousand.
From nine fifty to one thousand.
Right.
Just told us all.
So it went up to five thousand a month, at twelve months, it's sixty thousand. I'm sure that's the line item that I saw. So where at sixty thousand?
Do we pay Jason's salary through here, or does that get paid through the general fund or?
General fund. There's a, there's a line item or a spreadsheet dedicated to the general fund, yes.
I didn't know if that came out of our-
The good news is we don't have to pay aloe this year, we're done with that. Oh, yay!
Yeah.
What, seventy-five thousand?
All right, so, on this next budget, or this next item on the agenda, it was to talk about the commissioner's budget. Are we okay in simply doing that on the seventh?
Yes.
Okay, so we won't have to discuss that tonight.
No action on that item.
All right. So that takes us down through all of the general agenda items. Uh, we're going to old business, um, part of old business is time clock plus and payroll processes. I'm assuming that's all different, kind of, but you tell us where we're at there, Lisa.
Charlotte said to tell you, because she's kind of just taken this over, that we, she's hoping to move forward three or four different departments this month. So that's our start, that's awesome. I mean, just some of the smaller departments that are already set up, they'll take the time clock information and import it right into her payroll NIPS program. That's been our goal.
So we're making progress.
We are making progress.
Okay, and things will be a little different and hopefully expedited some during this whole process.
Spreadsheets aren't hard to do, but it might save some data entry that doesn't have to happen.
Okay.
Ooh.
Any other questions on the time clock plus?
Yeah, do you have anything else?
All right, if not, we'll go on down to the, uh, next section. We'll start with public comments. The board of commissioners will receive any public comments on items discussed at this meeting, or suggestions for items of discussion at a future board meeting. The board will not take action on comments presented this date. Is any, um, anyone from the public here this evening that would like to comment on any of this?
Mitch Wagers, let me spell that again, Kelly, you're good. All right, um, so I have a couple things. First, I want to commend Mr. Knapper for, uh, the desire to be in the meeting. I think that's commendable on his part, uh, even though he is remote. Uh, I'm not sure I appreciate the way it happened, but it is what it is. Uh, the second part is, I have brought this up multiple times about executive sessions, and I think that it is being used, at least the authority to have an executive session is being used inappropriately out of the Open Meetings Act. So that's where I stand with that. Uh, I have not heard from anybody, even after multiple requests to be contacted, so that's where I sit with that, and I just want you all to understand that, so.
Um, and I'll just mention to you, um, you can, um, speak with Mr. Ocean anytime about it. He's the guy that gives his blessing to these based upon the statute.
You're the commissioners, not Mr. Ocean.
Right, well-
Appreciate that.
Sure, these two items tonight that are on here, I think they're very specifically called out in statute as reasons to go into executive session.
How, just curious.
I've never been involved with any political subdivision where we discuss strategies for union contracts in front of the public. Never done that, ever.
So what's, what's the reason to not do it?
Well, obviously, if we're trying to negotiate a contract, we don't want to give away all of our negotiating points and where we think we might have some advantage, where we might think we don't have advantage, we don't want to give away all those items in a public setting when we're trying to negotiate. This is negotiating, and if it is, then we're going to try and negotiate the best we can for the county's position. And how can we do that if we give away all of our information in a public meeting? How do we do that?
Well, you didn't ask, I mean, I'm not involved in how you do that, because I'm not involved in those negotiations. I'm simply involved in saying that I, I completely understand and comprehend that the commissioners have the ability to vote to go into executive session.
Sure.
What I don't appreciate is that there's already an agenda item that says that it's an executive session, which means there were discussions that already happened prior to this meeting.
That's not true.
It has to be. How would you have an executive session? How do you decide that you're going to do it without a, without a meeting?
I would say that the sheriff received the information from the union and he informed somebody on the board to have me put this on or negotiation.
Right.
That is how.
I, I think there's.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean that they all talk to each other yet.
So I think there's a misunderstanding of my objection here. And it's fine to misunderstand and not agree. It's perfectly okay. My, my take is that there is an item on here that says executive session. It is easy enough during a commissioner's meeting to say, you know what? I think we're going a little bit too deep into this. I think there's a little bit too much information being publicly known at this point. And you're a perfect example of negotiations. I move, or I motion that we go into executive session and it can be seconded and then you vote on it. You go into executive session. But instead, this is already here. So there's already something involved in that discussion, no matter who it's between. It's on this agenda, so I'm expressing my opposition to that. That's where I stand.
I think, well, I'll let Jason, let him explain at least to, for his point of why he believes it needs to be done this way on the agenda. And then go into the executive session, but Jason, do you want to say anything?
With some of these things, they become semi-annual events or annual events. And if, if the information is received by the county clerk and they know that they're going to have to go in and discuss it, they're just putting it on the agenda ahead of time, but they haven't seen the information. Nothing has been agreed upon, nothing has been discussed yet. Kelly Sides receives the information and then puts it on the agenda ahead of time. And they will still have to make a motion to go into executive session even when it's an agenda item.
Sure, that's understood.
But, you know, this is done with, with, with a number of, a number of boards, you know, with, with certain boards involving schools, for example, there's an array. And when the array is received, that's what triggers the agenda item. Not that the decision-making body has discussed it ahead of time. It's based on when the information, when the information comes in.
Wouldn't it be worse if every time an executive session was required, that it was a surprise?
I would think so.
Rather than having it on the agenda?
This is pretty transparent right here.
That's what I was, that's what I'm getting at. Thank you, yeah.
Part of it also, Mitch, is that we're dealing with union negotiations and the, the unions also require, and I don't mean to use a word, you will, but in normal union negotiations, everything is done in executive session until the contract has been agreed upon and then it becomes public information while those negotiations are going on. And the union, the union will come unglued if all of a sudden we're discussing what they're asking for or we're asking for, if that's all done in an open meeting like this.
Well, again, I'm not, I'm not, there's a misunderstanding here and that's perfectly fine. I'm not objecting to having an executive session that's voted to go into executive session. I'm opposing the way it's written. It's not just this item. There have been other items in previous meetings. And that's where I sit and it's perfectly fine. I didn't write the law. I, I didn't write it. So I understand what Kelly's saying. I understand what you're saying. I understand what everybody's saying. I'm just saying, I didn't write the law. It says what it says. So I find it, I find it wrong to put it on there as we're going to hide it from you. You can, you can know what we're going to title it, but you, you can't know anything else. And we're going to decide that upfront, which has been decided because the agenda says what it says. It, it says it. It's here on paper.
It was not decided by law.
And it was not.
Well, that's even worse.
We don't, we don't, we don't know, we don't know what the discussions are going to be.
We didn't know it was going to be on there because we got our packet.
Then I'm glad we all agree that nobody knows. Is that, can we leave it at that on a good note at least?
When we meet, we will know when we get in.
Yeah, so we all agree that nobody knows.
Well, the union, the union representatives know what they're going to present.
I think the sheriff.
Or the sheriff's going to know, but we're not, we're not made aware of it until we go into executive session.
Again, it's not just this one. It's a culmination of the previous events. And I'm glad, I'm glad I expressed it, so.
The main reason that we're putting it on there ahead of time, so for example, if it involves litigation that I'm involved in on Annapolis County, and I have to update the board, I want to put it on the agenda ahead of time, so I will contact Ms. Sides to do that. And, but part of that is to alert the, the public that if, if we were doing something that doesn't fall within the Open Meetings Act, that people can comment and object so that the commissioners would be able to take that into account, which is why I always feel like to the extent that we know about it ahead of time, we want it to be an agenda item so that if somebody was to come forward and say, that's not permitted by the Open Meetings Act, they could consider those objections before they vote on a motion. So.
Isn't that what I'm doing?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Other than we're saying these are allowed under that Open Meetings Act back there.
But I'm not, I'm not clear what the injury would be, like under the, under the statute, what would the injury be for having in a public meeting?
Well, for example, if it's litigation, again, part of it is strategy.
This isn't litigation.
No, these are negotiations, but the concept is the same, and that is the Open Meetings Act, that's why they only have limited exceptions. A lot of this, whether it's budget or otherwise, the, the law is, is that we need, that the commissioners need to think out loud in front of the public so the public can follow what, what they're taking into consideration and making a decision. But if it's negotiations or litigation, if we do that in front of the plaintiff, we're, we're essentially giving them a roadmap on, on how high we're going to go or whether we're not going to consider settlement.
Or, or one third part with that is that releasing names of individuals that were involved in that litigation, that, that you can't have in an open meeting also. We don't, I mean, that's, that's not public information until it becomes public information. And there's only three ways that you can go in an executive session. Litigation, contract negotiations, and the personnel. The personnel issue, they have a, if you're going to be talking about, so they have that option to have that in an open meeting. And we've had that here before.
Right.
But the, the other ones are pretty specific. The, the information we're going to receive on, on this one is going to be coming from the union or through the representatives. We don't know what it is. We haven't been notified of that. And, and the same with litigations. We don't, we don't know what the litigation is until we sit down with, with our attorney or whoever's representing that particular, who's suing us for whatever reason, and who the name is and what the reason is.
I, I appreciate the time. I just think we're talking about jumping from point A in a conversation to point Z in a conversation in a very short time, which is not what I was trying to get at. But I do appreciate the time and I don't want to drag it out. Everybody else is.
Yeah, see how other people do it.
I'm not interested. I'm not interested in how other people do it. I'm expressing it to you all.
Right, and so I, I think what you said is that the law needs to be changed. And if so, then that's a good idea. We, you need to get with Mr. Harden and maybe some others and.
Oh, no, I don't think the law needs to be changed.
That's how.
Appreciate that, though.
All right, so I thought that's what you were saying.
No, I said I didn't write the law.
I know.
Okay.
And so I think that means you didn't write it and you, you don't really agree with it, is what I thought you were implying.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else under this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to the next one, Board and Staff Reports with discussion. So I think, Ms. Kelly, do you want to start?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Okay, Steve?
Just a couple of quick updates. Just been finding some gravel washouts with these thunderstorms that you can hear out there now on some gravel roads. And we started chip sealing again this week. We did Liberty Oil this morning. Do Sugar Factory here the rest of the week, so. That's about it, really not too much else to report.
Okay, all right, thanks. Troy?
Okay, just want to let, I know Mr. Harris and Mr. Blue already know, but Wednesday and Thursday, the Lieutenant Governor will be here with the Attorney General of the National Guard and Command Staff will be out to do a community partnership. They're going to talk about emergency management resources that they can bring for major disasters and that kind of stuff. On Thursday morning about nine o'clock, they're going to do a presentation out here at Veterans Park. And they'll say a few things, say some words about the veterans and that kind of stuff, so you guys are invited to it. And I know Mr. Harris is going to be signing a ceremonial MOU between the National Guard and Scottsburg County, letting us know about the resources they could bring if we, if we needed that kind of stuff. And that'll be Wednesday and Thursday this week. Okay?
Thanks. Robert, do you have anything? Carla? Hemmy? No. Er, no. Sheriff, do you have anything? All right. Jason, do you have anything?
Just briefly, at the, at the last meeting, there was a presentation by Ryan Powers, District Supervisor for USDA Wildlife Services, and was kind of reviewing the last agreement that was entered with the county, which I think ran from July 1st to June 30th, I think was the period of time. Is that correct? And the, the amount, the last go-round was just a little over 11,615 dollars, I think was the county's portion of that. And I think USDA is working through some budget issues to determine what, if any, funds they may have available to fund that position for the wildlife damage management. I was asked to take a look at what, what potential cost to the county there could be in the absence of an agreement like that, again, with the USDA or some combination of counties joining together. Doesn't look like the statutes in this area have, have changed. There is Nebraska Revised Statute 23-35801 that talks about control services availability and payment. Long story short, it indicates that these animal damage control services shall be available to every individual citizen or group of citizens of the state in that the employment of those services basically is initiated by the individual or the group. And that in support of the cost of managing those things, each county shall match funds supplied by any resident individual or group of individuals, up to a maximum of $1,000 for any specific animal damage control program. And if the county enters into an agreement, say with other counties, we're capped, we, we can't bear more than 50% of the cost of those unless we wanted to do a program on our own. So it's basically, the contribution is essentially limited to the matching funds that, you know, would be supplied by residents or a group.
And up to 1,000.
Up to 1,000 dollars.
So, and up to now, we have never had, I've never had anybody request, ever had a request.
But if someone, okay, so let me be sure. So if someone had a whatever problem, we always seem to talk about prairie dogs, but, so if someone had a, a problem and they needed to, to have them dealt with and that was going to take, let's say, $5,000 to get it done, they could hire the, this state or federal program to do it. And if so, say that it's, yeah, going to cost that 5,000 and the federal people are going to charge that landowner to get it done for 5,000, then are you saying then that of that 5,000, we could be responsible for 1,000?
That's even if we don't have any money on chat.
Even if we have them or don't, if we sign this contract or don't sign it? Are we possible on the hook for 1,000 dollars?
Well, I think the idea behind, as I understood the presentation before, that the idea behind the agreement would be to say that the county would be, would be essentially creating this program to try to cap how much they're going, they're going to have somebody dedicated to doing this and that we're going to be, have a more of a budget idea of how much we're going to spend annually on that, on that service, that this person would be available to remediate some of these things.
We have contractors that are. But, but in all the years we've been doing this, and all the years we've been contracting with, with the state, and I, I don't, I think one turned in a bill that was denied. But other than that, the state has handled all of it. We haven't had to pay any of it because we had. They build the individual. Because, yeah, because we had, we had this agreement, this MOU with, with the state. So if we don't have that, what are we on there for then? We don't have the agreement.
So it'd be up to the, up to the 1,000 dollars.
Per claim. 1,000 dollars per claim, so.
And state has it or whether a private contract, does it, they still build the individual? They still build indirectly. We'd be responsible for 1,000 dollars if they turn a building. Even though we, even, that's where the question is, whether we have that, that agreement or not. And, and again, it was my understanding, if we had the agreement, we're not going to get billed anything. They're going to take care of all of it. That's not true. That's not what they just said. Yeah.
Russ? Well, we've got people in the crowd that.
Say it again.
People are letting me know they can't hear you.
Can't hear me.
So one of the questions that I've got with, and I, I think they're still trying to formulate some information, is going to be essentially that, meaning that whether we can, you can look at it as we're going to make this person available to try to remediate these things versus trying to pay potentially 1,000 dollars per accepted remediation program. But to, to see historically where they've, how they've been able to communicate that to the landowners to try to, really, is it going to be a genuine cap? That the county knows that if we expend this amount of money that, versus whether individuals are still going to come forward with a potential claim and seek up to 1,000 dollars?
Even if we've paid the 11,000 or whatever amount that it is?
So I'm trying to get some additional feedback on that, but at least statutorily, that's the, the cap on the match, that we would be limited to matching funds that have been supplied by an individual or a group, up to 1,000 dollars annually.
So are you suggesting then that maybe you'll have some more updated information in two weeks or something?
Yes.
Okay. So is that good enough for now then?
Sure.
Okay, appreciate your information. But yeah, if you have more detailed information later, that's good.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. Lisa?
I just had that regional governance meeting we're, we're supposed to attend on Wednesday at noon at Scottsburg Schools.
Russ?
Okay, well, like Steve said, we were out this morning and working with them, getting the chip seal done. There was a question with the city of Morale. They didn't know exactly where their, their property or where they, city limits ended and where the county started. And they're thinking it's way into town, so we went ahead and we negotiated with the mayor and one of the city council members today, and they made other calls and talked to them that. We went ahead and chip sealed to where it used to be the old property line or the old city limits. And that asphalt turns into concrete at that point. Well, since the motel was built, they moved those, those boundaries out further, about almost a half a mile, quarter, a good corner of a mile, I'd say, wouldn't you, Steve? I went and down to mapping on the way up here this afternoon and got a new map and gave it to Steve. And, and he was pretty much right on where he had flagged it today. But we negotiated with him that Steve would charge him the material.
we negotiated with him that Steve would charge him the materials, not any labor fees, but we would charge him for the rock and the oil to go right up to where it used, because it needed repair, it was bad. And so they, the guys went ahead and fixed it for him and they, so once we determine exactly where that point is, then Steve will bill them and you can get refunded to the county for what we had in our out-of-pocket expenses. And so, and then I have a cap win tomorrow and, oh gosh, what is it, Sears House on Thursday? I don't know how I'm going to get it all done, but I'm going to give it a run, a run at it. I'm done.
Well, I had to miss a safety meeting this last week due to a funeral in our town. I did meet this morning with the Emergency Management Advisory Board. We met at Minister Fire. Our next meeting will be in Lyman, next time we meet, like they were, we're doing a traveling road show, so other communities can see that, we can see them, we can, it opens up dialogue. That's about it, I'll be participating in the Agent General's visit, particularly the emergency management area, that's about it.
Okay, so as I've already mentioned, I was involved with some preliminary budget hearings with, or meetings with Lisa and Ken and then I do have a couple of other meetings this week and I did meet with Panel of Public Health as well last week. And we have a, I have some meetings coming up this week, but I'm trying to work them all in around the budget time and we'll see what happens with that. But we, we have, all of you know, these five days of budget hearings that will be coming up, so that's it.
All my meetings are next week, other than the meeting that Mark was talking about, one budget with individual departments. I, I just wanted to bring up one and I'm not going to get into detail, a whole lot of detail. Had an incident where I was in need of a sheriff's deputy, was out in the country. Deputy responded in probably thirty minutes or less, which was wonderful, and took control. He had indicated that it may take a couple of days to do what needed to be done. It was on an animal situation that we had. That afternoon, I received a call that he had did what he needed to do. The, the animals were secured and things were looking a lot better. I think it's under litigation or whatever, whatever it is. And again, I don't want to, I, I sent a note to Mark about it and for all of the doubters out there that think, well, we don't have, it takes two hours to get a deputy, we got this, that's not, not how things work. They responded quickly, did what needed to be done and it was a very favorable outcome. It's not over yet, but it's, it's at least doing, so kudos to the sheriff's department.
Charlie, are you still online? Charlie, you still there?
Okay, so I believe that gets us down to the point of legislation. Does anyone here have any report on any legislation?
You'll see there's a final legislative report from NACO in your emails.
Okay.
It came today.
Good.
That's all I've got.
All right, thanks.
Yeah. Let's go.
So the next item is, we have two executive session, the first item says executive session for purpose of union contract negotiations for Sheriff's Union and the second item, discuss and consider approval of 2025 wage comparison for Scottsburg County Sheriff's Office and Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number Forty-One.
The second would not be executive session.
We can do that afterwards?
Yeah.
I was going to say, I didn't have two execs.
I thought they were both part of that. All right, so the first one is the executive session for purpose of union contract negotiations for the Sheriff's Union. So any question on that? I'll move, we go into executive session for the purpose of union contract negotiation.
Who's going to be in the session?
And I would say the commissioners, Jason, and do we also need the sheriff in that as well?
As we do.
And Troy Brown.
Are you involved Lisa?
Yeah, okay.
All right, and so we would include.
You are or are not.
Yes.
She can, I'll second, I'll second the motion.
I already have a second.
You do?
I had Harris in blue.
Good, all right. So we have that motion and second any other discussion? All right, if not, let's go ahead and vote.
He's working on it.
You have four yeses.
So the motion's carried, it's six forty-six.
I'll be in there at six forty-eight.
Well, I'm going to stop.
Yeah, I was promised a break.
I know and I missed it, sorry. I'm getting ready to text him.
Who, Russ?
Russ, yeah. Sheriff? Oh, she'll do it. I was going to have you do it. All right, are you ready, Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Meeting will come back into regular session, I show it at seven twenty.
Roll call?
Yes.
Harris?
Here.
Meyer?
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Blue?
Yes.
Okay, so we were in executive session for purpose of union contract negotiations and Troy, do you want to present what you had to present?
Okay, so we discussed the wage comparabilities of Scottsburg County compared to the counties that Mr. Essman recommended and we agreed to the starting and ending wages and pay scales.
So you, you recommend, you informed us.
We agreed.
Yeah, you, you informed us of the.
Yeah, recommended the, the wages based on the comparability study of, that we conducted between myself and the union and we presented those numbers to you guys, the recommendation.
So Mr. Ocean, my understanding is we need to move to approve this wage comparisons study to be used in the, in the balance of the contract negotiation.
So my understanding is this is a breakdown of the array, the comparable counties that were used to determine mean, median and midpoint of deputies, sergeants, lieutenants, clerical and administrative assistants.
Yes.
So you would be on the agenda if, if there's an agreement that these, this, that this represents the pay set out for the members within the array, that you would be agreeing that this is an appropriate wage review with comparable counties to, to use moving. But you're not, there's not going to be any vote on, on a contract at this point, just that there's an agreement that these are the, the array figures that we're going to use.
So is there a motion to that effect?
I would so move.
Okay, so that this wage.
To use the twenty, twenty twenty-five wage comparison study?
To use the wage compare that was presented to us.
Yes, we're only working on the array, right?
And the wages.
And I will second that.
Okay, have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. It's not me that's not.
Mark and Russ.
Mine didn't do much.
I was going to say you were close. You have four yeses.
So motion's carried. So that takes care of everything on the agenda, the way I see it, there's nothing on the back side of our sheet.
And with that?
That's it, meeting's adjourned.
I do not.
Oh, did you, you guys should have all got an email, I think this afternoon from.
It is, I got one.
From Kelly on this deal, did you guys?
I did. Do you want that copy?
So, oh, it's about a health, healthcare access meeting.